First item is the roll call and seating of alternates. I see Ann is here, Leanne is here, Scott is here, I'm here, and Susan is here. So we will seat Susan as the fifth member of the commission tonight. Moving on to item three would be any additions or changes to the agenda. Jim, did you have any changes you wanted to make on that?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
There should have been a memo that went out from the Finance Office regarding the release of any unspent funds under the legal line item for planning and zoning for this fiscal year.
Yes, I saw that.
Okay, that would require action, I believe, by the commission.
Okay, so we will add that under item nine, the miscellaneous items. We'll discuss turning money back in. Now, one of the things I forgot to ask Amanda before we started, are you doing the minutes tonight? I did not see Linda on here.
I'm here, Jed.
Oh, okay. I didn't see your name showing up there. Thank you, Linda.
Jed, if you try to go to the grid view, you can see everyone. Try on your top right.
Yeah, well, that's... Okay, there we go. Yep.
Perfect.
How nice that is.
Who the... The name of the person is owner. Do we know the other person on the call? Just double checking. Carry on.
One other minor change to the agenda on item eight, approval of meeting minutes. It says April 23rd. I think the date of the last meeting was April 20th. So with that, no other changes to the agenda. Is anybody from the public here, and that would probably be owner, whoever that is, is there any public speak? And Bill will talk about your... You have got the main item tonight, so you don't have to talk about that here. You'll get plenty of time in just a minute.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, hearing nobody that wants to speak on behalf of the public, we'll go on to the new business. And Bill, that's yours to brief us on however you'd like. We're ready to accept the application. And I did see, Jim, that the application form showed up in the file late this afternoon. So we did get that on top of the numerous other documents that you sent to us, Mr. Devine.
I'm Bill.
Very good, Bill.
Don't need the mister.
For the record, this is Jim. The application was in fact submitted prior to today.
Yep, understand. We're just trying to...
Got lost in the abyss of computer.
I'm happy that we found it and got it posted before the meeting started tonight, so that when we get to you, Jim, you can tell us the status of having a complete application. It will go there from that. But heading back to Bill at this point.
Quick overview, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not hearing you as well as I was before, Bill.
Well, let's see if I can... I'm on speakerphone.
I'm hearing you better now. Yep.
Okay, I'll just hold this up. You want me to give you a brief overview of what we're...
Yes, please.
Okay. I gotta back up a little bit and tell you that this is our 10th house. Did not expect to have a 10th. Expected to stay in our 9th, which was a 1769 Georgian in Bosco in New Hampshire. We spent nine years restoring. One quick sentence about that, the people who bought it had an appraisal, and the appraisal report said it was built in 1769, but the effective age was eight years. Think about that for a second. 1769 house, effectively eight years old. That's how much restoration we did. So why are we before the commission tonight, and what motivated it, and what's the plan? Well, the plan is that we have a 51-year-old son, graduate of the College of the Atlantic in Bar Harbor, Maine. Jason has never borrowed a dime in his life. He paid cash for everything he's ever done. He wants to get out of the city of Baltimore. He worked for us at one point in time back in the early 2000s as a shipping manager for our cattle lawn company. And he wants to get into organic farming. And we saw an opportunity to do a number of things, one of which was to have him closer to us and middle 70s, as my wife and I are. We figured we were going to need a little bit of help eventually, not today, but eventually. Our daughter is in Portland, Oregon. Jason wanted to farm, wanted to get out of Baltimore City. And we said, "Okay, let's look for a place." We are, Casey, my wife and I, are very much dyed-in-the-wool native New Englanders. We will not live anywhere else. We've looked at other states. We've lived in other states, Missouri, Illinois, New York, Rhode Island, Maine, New Hampshire, and now Connecticut. Connecticut, we wanted to come someplace where it was a little warmer, someplace that had another old house, because we are old house people. And you can't go any further south in New England than Connecticut. So that was part of the reason for looking at Connecticut. The other was looking for a property that had an old house that we could do what we do best with, and that's restore it, that had enough room for our son to be able to start a career as an organic farmer. And we needed a place that either had an existing accessory apartment, second building, or one which had enough space and a town that was willing to let us do it. When we bought this house back in the fall, we closed December 4th. And one of the three contingencies that we had when we bought them and we made the offer on the house was the ability to build what we were calling at that point in time a caretaker cottage, and we still think of it that way. We met with Jim's predecessor the last week that John was here. He walked through it, told us, "Yes, you can do it. It's a lengthy process, plan on two to three months, but you can do it," and warned me that the application was going to be a pain in the neck. So with that, we removed the contingency. The other two that we had incidentally had to do with septic and wells. We didn't care about the house. We'd done this enough times that we could go through it, and we knew the kind of stuff we were going to have to do to make this restoration something we would be comfortable with. So with all of that, we chose Andover very carefully. We spent more than nine months looking for a property. And in fact, when we came to look at this, we had a full-price cash offer on our house in New Hampshire that we didn't sign off on because we didn't have a house yet. And we looked at this one and one in Hebron, as a matter of fact, the last two. And if this house had not been right for us, we would not have made the move until probably now sometime. So that's the background. Our son is ready and eager to come. We're waiting for this crazy virus malarkey to go away, or at least enough so that we can get him up here. We're planning now sometime in mid to latter part of June. If all goes well, if the members, the U.N. members of the commission, agree that we have a project that is worthy of being done in Andover, Connecticut, we hope to be able to break ground in early July and have him in his detached accessory apartment, caretaker cottage by early fall. Obviously, no farming work until next year. That's the overview. I do want to say, before we get into what questions you may have, I really want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the commission, and especially Jim, for being open to allowing me to try to put together an application that seemed, to me at least, to answer all of your questions and concerns without having to go to that on godly expense of doing some of the things that, for a good reason, are in the site requirements of the zoning regulations. I'm ready for your questions.
Well, I would hope that when we get to the end of this process that you would conclude that it was, one, not overly lengthy, and, two, not overly a pain in the neck. So I am going to jump to Jim for his assessment of the completion of your application. But it looked like you did a lot of good work preparing for what you sent to us, and we all appreciate that.
Thank you.
Jim, what's your conclusion after reviewing the materials that have been submitted?
Okay, I met with Bill a number of times over the course of the last few months. Spoken to him, and I did visit the site briefly. And he's put together a very thorough application. As some of you know, the application is coming for you. This is the first time anybody has applied for a special permit for a detached accessory apartment. This is in Division 4.11.3 allows that under certain parameters. It seems to have met those. I believe we're still waiting for final approval on this septic. Is that accurate, Bill?
I'm sorry, still waiting for what, Jim?
An approval on the septic plan?
The other improvements?
Approval.
Oh, the approval. Oh, yes. Well, no, I think the only other approval that is out there that I'm aware of at least is the wetland certificate. As I've shown you and done, and we've talked about this, the wetlands are in...
And I will... Okay, I'll touch base on that. Currently, I am not authorized to sign off as wetlands agent. I'm trying to work through that. What I've done on other properties is look at information that's available in recent subdivisions. Nothing on file for this particular property. I did walk it. Both sites is well over 100 feet from what appears to be wetlands, in my opinion. I say well over, maybe 125 feet.
That's about right.
Site itself is... It's a fairly large lot. And it's fairly flat, or at least a good portion of it is. Seems to lend itself to this, to Bill's intent here. Just as a point of record, the application came in under the name of William and Casey Devine Family Trust. And if there's any other name out there associated with the application, it was my error. At such time, did the commission choose to accept the application? That's the name that it came in under. That's about all I have. I still am continuing to look at it, but it looks very thorough.
Okay, would any of the other commission members have any questions for the applicant here this evening?
What exactly, Jed, are we going to go over tonight? I mean, 23-2B is a long list of things that have to be put on a print.
And that's a question that I would put back to Jim. I'm a little, you know, not certain myself when we're talking about an accessory apartment. Do all the requirements of a site plan need to be complied with as you go through the special permitting thing?
It says in 4.11.2, which is the accessory apartment that tells you to go back to 23-2B. And 23-2B is, you know, there's 10 or 12 things that are missing.
That is absolutely correct, Mr. Person. The... That section, 23-2B, the site preparation thing, as I mentioned, I guess when we first talked at the last meeting, and when I had numerous discussions with both Jim and his predecessor, that... You know, I'm an old dude, and I've done a lot of stuff in my life from writing major grant applications to owning and running radio stations. And I got to tell you, in my 74 years, I never panicked over anything in my life until I looked at that site plan requirement. And it was when I had the advice that, and when I read the section, and I've forgotten what the proper number is, where the zoning regulations, and I think in their wisdom when they were written, gave the commission the opportunity to waive any sections of that 23-2B site requirement that they felt could be waived. And if I had to hire someone to go 200 feet from my lot to try to determine the height of people's houses, where the septics were, where the wells were, if I had to do the diameter of all of the trees that were three feet at chest height and identify all the flower and fauna, I couldn't have done it. To have someone who prepares these kinds of things do this would probably have cost us, I don't know, four, five, six, $7,000. And at that point, that would have made the project with our budget that we have for this, which is, I think, a pretty significant one. It would have made it inadequate. So I guess, Mr. Person, the answer to your first comment is, yes. The actual regulations do have a number of points in them that have not been addressed by my application. What I think my application does do, consistent with the zoning regulations as I've read them, I think they do give you everything that you need to do your due diligence to decide whether or not this application for a detached accessory apartment meet the spirit and the letter of the zoning regulations. To be blunt, to be honest, I believe they do. But you are correct, sir.
It does. I would say that what you're saying is accurate, but, you know, it clearly states that all the things in 23-2B have to be met. And it's not like it's a lot. It's, you know, an A2 by a professional engineer. Probably have to have the test bits where they're located on there, the height, the type of construction of the building, building coverage on the property, which is not a big deal, the plan for the cars, where the cars are going to be located. ENS, that's a requirement 4.10. To test, I know you had a water test done for... Water test done for, I don't know if it was just for gallons per minute or if the quality was done, but that has to be done. The approval by wetlands has to be done, lighting, where the lighting's going to be. Mr. Devine, this is our first accessory apartment, and I think we need to do it fairly adequately. And all that stuff, you know, a surveyor can put that on a piece of, on a drawing very quickly.
Sir, I do not disagree with you. You need to be comfortable with this. I absolutely concur with that. But I think that the framers of these sections of the zoning regulations recognized that there were certain projects that were much bigger and certain projects that would be much smaller. That's why I believe that the commission was given the authority to waive any portions of Section 23-2B that it decided to. As I went through sections four, five, and six, I believe those are the three ones that I dealt with, I don't know what to tell you, sir, but I guess I... When you talk about lighting, where does the lighting need to be? There isn't going to be any lighting. There isn't going to be any lighting. There are so many things that are, by our town zoning regulations permitted by special permit, that it's a huge shopping list, huge shopping list. And obviously, if somebody wanted to build a... I don't have the regulations in front of me, so I apologize if I'm saying something that's way off base. It's not a nursing home. You know, it's a 792-square-foot apartment. That's what it is. I don't have to worry about access and parking and how much is going to be permeated and all the kinds of things that someone building, wanting a special permit to build something bigger would be.
And I concur with what you're saying, Mr. Devine. I'm only one of five. You know, if other people have views, you know, everyone's views should be brought up, and I'm open to any new information. I always am. I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say about it. Thank you.
This is Jim. I just want to note that Mr. Devine did request waivers. He didn't just miss items randomly. I mean, he did specifically request waivers. And the way the process is structured, waivers aren't granted until such time as the application is, the public hearing is open and the commission is deliberating. So that's how we got where it is.
Right. I've heard of waivers being granted for scale or a two-foot rule on the topography or some stuff like that, you know, wetlands, if there's none in the vicinity. All those things are things that I... This is building. I mean, if you're going to put in a shed, they have to have it on a piece of paper someplace. With the building, you know, style, what you're building it out of, you know, everything has to be there. This is a be a dwelling. I just think that there should be a little bit more information on, a little bit more information given. That's all. That's all I'm saying.
Scott, he did provide a copy of the architectural plans. He provided a map that showed where this is going to be located. And so I thought most of his waiver requests were very reasonable, considering a 790-foot building. But I thought the architectural design was very attractive and in keeping with a historic site of this type.
Right. And I'm glad that you're saying that, Sue. I'm happy that somebody else is saying something. But one thing that it does say is that it's supposed to be a professional engineer that, you know, Connecticut Registered Professional Engineer that has to sign off on this. If you want to waive that also, that's fine with me, too.
Oh, I think you had the... Do you have an... I can't, I don't have it up in front of me right now. I did study your plans this afternoon. Were they done by an architect or an engineer?
The house plan was done by an architect.
Okay.
The survey, the A2 survey of the lot, that was obviously done by a professional surveyor.
Maps that he used were copies of a... Plans prepared by an engineer for as part of the subdivision years ago, I believe. They were reused, so...
And we've allowed that repeatedly in the past to take plans that existed, older A2 surveys, and have gone with them.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that, using that one. I think that you could, you don't think that adding an additional structure to an existing A2 by a professional engineer is anything that you'd like to see?
On the drawing for the caretaker's cottage, let's see where it has...
I see the number.
...by an architect. And so if we go back to the start, I agree with Bill, I agree with Scott, I agree with Susan, and I agree with Jim. And so as I look through the information that Bill provided to us, I thought that he hit most of the high points on all the requirements that I could find in there. And as he mentioned, you know, at one point, when we were looking at the property, and I forget the fellow's name, where he's got the home business. And one of the things we specifically looked at over there was the lighting around the big garage that he was putting up for his home business over there off, you know, Long Hill Road. The... So there are some things in there that are clearly not applicable. I tried to go through our checklist to see how did that do for getting the things that we were looking for. And, you know, that checklist tries to be, you know, one thing, it tries to be the answer to everybody's prayers on how to get ready for an application. And I wasn't really satisfied with my walking through that either. And so the way the process should go is that all the materials come in. Jim and Bill would have sat down with the checklist, gone through, you know, item by item, and they can have a discussion and say, "Yes, it's applicable, and we got it. No, it's not applicable, and here's why. And we need this one, and it'll be submitted before we get to the public hearing." But the checklist wouldn't have done an item-by-item look like you did, Scott, when you were looking at that particular section there. A couple of the things that I went through, you know, and it said, each special permit will have the erosion and sediment plan. And I went back and I looked at Bill's notes that he provided. And I thought he had, you know, a satisfactory discussion in there on erosion and sediment controls. And essentially, you don't need much to go do what he's looking to do. So I guess it would certainly be easier to do that if we weren't in an environment where we couldn't get a couple of us sitting around a table looking at a drawing to do that. And I was hoping that by now we would be back to the point where we could do that. We're not there yet. What I kind of like to think the model should be would be that when we do something like an accessory apartment, and I agree this, the first time through it, we need to do a pretty close look, or even the subdivision that we went through for the first time a month ago with the open space issues, that we have that discussion, and we go item by item, and we say, "Yep, this we need, this we don't," and we can come up with a small list. But as I went through all the things in that section you cited, Scott, I was hard-pressed to come up with something that I thought was important that he didn't include there. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't be out there looking for it. That doesn't mean we shouldn't, you'll figure out how to have the special permit. The first special permit I went through, my feedback to the group after we were done was, "It's a free-for-all. We didn't pay any attention to any of the requirements. We just went out and said, 'Okay, go ahead.'" And so we're looking at going from one extreme to the other and trying to find what makes sense going through there. If any member of the commission had, you know, I guess the other thing... If any member of the commission had, you know, I guess the other thing that I was thinking of as I went through here was the question on topography. And do we have a drawing that specifies the topography of the land? And that concerned me a little bit with development of a sediment erosion control plan. But I heard the comment either Bill or Jim made that it's fairly level. And one of the suggestions that I was going to make here tonight is that ask if there's any interest in having the commission go over and do a site walk on the property, because I think that would help us gain a better perception for what are the important attributes that we need to make sure get included in the final plan. And, you know, are we happy with the information you provided us there?
I'd be delighted to have you come look at the property.
So, how does the commission feel about doing something like that?
Jed, this is Leanne. I have a couple of questions.
Yep, go ahead, Leanne.
One is, what paperwork has been submitted? I'm looking for attachments from last month, and if anything was sent today or even since the last meeting regarding this, I didn't get it. I don't know if it's something came today that Susan is referring to. I also, as you know, didn't get a copy of the meeting notice for tonight, so I don't know if something's not coming through to me. Are there drawings? Are there waiver requests that others received, others on the commission?
Okay, so, Leanne, if you, and I know, you know, Scott and I had a conversation on that earlier today, too. If you go to the planning and zoning, go to the town website, click on planning and zoning, and then scroll down underneath all that introductory stuff, you will find a section that has, and it's right above the different applications that you could click on. I think Amanda's trying to call up that screen now, maybe.
So this is not the section with meeting minutes?
It is not. No. And that was one of the things I was going to talk about later, is, you know, Jim and I have been talking about, what should we be talking about? And it's the process. Because, yeah, how do we bake this stuff in a cogent form where it's easy for us to find it? You know, we need to talk about why the emails aren't getting through to the people that need them and that sort of thing. But you see up on the screen now the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think, Amanda, if you scroll down...
Yes.
So I just wanted to share that Leanne does have an AOL account, and it's not her, it's us. Our town email has trouble getting through to AOL and Yahoo account, so sometimes that happens.
But there's, yeah, and I know...
For reference, I do have a Gmail account that we can use, and it's just been the last, I mean, it's just been actually this month, and if anything was sent, as I said, other, you know, pertaining to this application that we're talking about or something else that I didn't get since our last meeting, because in the past I haven't had any trouble. But no, I haven't seen anything regarding this application at all.
So up on the screen now, Leanne, is all the information that was submitted with respect to this application.
Okay.
And there's a lot of it there, and we're just talking about accepting the application tonight. But there's a fair amount of information there. Might not be everything that's in accordance with that section 23.2, but there's a fair amount. And I went looking through something that troubled me that I couldn't find and, as I say, I was struggling with the topography, but my suspicion was it was a fairly level lot, and that was, you know, commented on here tonight.
Okay, so if we're not finalizing anything tonight, we're just accepting, then I have time to go in, or somebody has time to send these things to me to another email address.
You do. And to go back to the point on the email distribution, you know, we need to standardize how we want to do business. Sometimes all the documents get emailed out to us. For this case, it's all here in one spot, and I think that's good. You know, Scott and I were talking earlier about for the Board of Selectmen, there's a folder for the meeting. Well, I think, after I thought about that, I like the way that this is laid out here because all the information on this particular application is in one spot, whether it came in the last meeting, this meeting, or in preparation for the next meeting, anything you want to see is right there. I would share that I also did not get the email from the town. And, well, I did get it, and somehow, every now and then, one from the town goes into my spam file, and I don't get to see it. And so, we'll look on, you know, getting the email problem screened out. But I thought we had a pretty good documentation justification for what Bill was looking to do. And if there's, and I'm, like Scott said, I've won vote. But I thought he did a pretty thorough job. Certainly, neither Jim nor Bill know how to read my mind yet as to know exactly what I'm looking for, but I thought he came pretty close to getting it there. And I don't want to give away the farm, but I don't want to make it such a pain in the neck process that we can never get through it either. So that's kind of where I'm, my feelings are on the subject here. I want to have a good standard, but I don't want to make it excruciating where we're putting the same amount for a caretaker cottage that we would for building the Taj Mahal.
Right. I mean, even down to the ASBIL, what are you going to do for that?
Yes, the ASBIL, in fact, I don't know whether it's part of all of this or not, but I know I had discussions about it. And what I am willing to do, and again, I'm not sure that I put it anywhere in there, there has to be an ASBIL, and it ought to be done by an engineer or by a surveyor after the foundation is in. And I think that, I think that may be one thing that you really want to see. Plus, to be honest, if you look at the A2 survey and you look at the actual, what I call the location, which is the aerial map, you can see that the existing barn is not positioned correctly on the A2. So there really should be an ASBIL which is done after the foundation at least is in, maybe even beyond that. I don't know. That's up to you folks to tell me when you want it done. But there should be, there should be an ASBIL done. I agree with that.
If you have, if you have an engineer come for that, it would be very simple for him. If he's going to do the ASBIL, he can put in a lot of stuff real quick. It doesn't take long for an engineer to put a few different things in so that we can see that a lot of these things are on the print. And in the, you know, the septic test holes? Where are they located?
You have those. The test holes are on the testing locations.
Right, I read all that, Bill, but it's normally just all on a print. And he could put the cars, where the parking is going to be, where you, it only takes those guys a very short period of time to do that kind of stuff. That's all I'm having a problem with, is just, you know, something documented, more documentation is all I'm looking for.
Can that be done, this person, I mean, after the foundation goes in?
Bring him there at one time and have him fulfill all these requirements, and I, you know, that's fine with me. But you had, I read through every document that you had, and it all looked really good. But then when I go back to 23.2B, and it specifies that they want these things. And that's all I'm having a problem with. The rest of it was fine. I think you did a great job. You did much better than a lot of people I've seen.
Thank you. Honestly, I appreciate the comments, and I really did try my level best to answer all of this. There is some stuff that I could not do. There's some things that no way I could do in any kind of reasonable timeframe, like the topography stuff. I mean, I looked at all the maps, and it was at that point when I looked at all the maps that I began to have a, I hate to admit this because I'm a pretty calm guy, I had a panic attack, and I looked at that 52-item checklist, and I went through it. And just as, Chairman, as you said, I went through and I checked off all of the things, and I wrote NA beside the things I didn't think were necessary. Or at least, from my perspective, I didn't.
And any engineer can overlay topography on a map?
Well, I do agree that there should be an ASBIL. I guess my questioning at this point is, it's a kind of a rock and a hard place. I'm willing to do it. That's not the question here. I'm just wondering whether or not it provides the town with a more accurate, better record and provides this landowner with a better record if the ASBIL is done after the foundation is in place for the building. I'm also waiting for the actual drawing from Brainworks, from Justin, in terms of the septic stuff. I mean, he's been here, he shot the levels, and Fat King had told me where he thought the tank should be and where he thought the leach field should be. And of course, Justin has all of that, and when Fat King was here, I actually used a couple of driveway stakes to mark what he had suggested for the actual locations. And then when Justin came and looked and figured the whole thing, so it's...
And the engineer can put all that stuff on the document for you, make a better document.
Yeah, this is Jim. First of all, I'd like to address Leanne's question earlier, and I apologize, you didn't appear to get a copy of the agenda, which would have directed you to the town's website. But if you send me your email, I'd be happy to get it out. But there is one item that is not on here, which Bill submitted, which is the request for waiver. And the reason it's not on here is because I didn't have it post-liquid. Part of it is, we just started doing this. And in wetlands, for instance, the beauty of this is that it goes back, I mean, wetlands, a lot of times there's applications that stay with them for three or four months. And folks have trouble going back and finding the right documents. So this way, they're together, you know, they're lumped by application. So they're, but if the commission intends, I mean, it sounds like they're looking for, well, at least some folks are looking for additional information. And I mean, this had come up, and I'm wondering if a site walk is going to transpire. If I had a checklist in place at that time and got a better handle on exactly what waivers would be entertained, which just wouldn't. And if we could, that early on, and try and accommodate the applicant here.
Again, Jim, the model that I would like to go to is where, you know, you and the applicant sit down ahead of time, using your best judgment, and then you come and brief the commission on, you know, these are the things that we didn't think would be appropriate for this application, and here's why, as opposed to us going out and hunting for which ones weren't being complied with.
Jim, what were the waivers anyways? And what were the applicable actions? What were the waivers and where were they located in 23.2B?
I don't have the numbers. I don't have that.
Or 11.
But, um... 23. I don't have that information. I'm sorry.
Well, I can go upstairs to my office computer and print something out, but I can't pull it up on...
Yeah, no, I think, so again, if Amanda, I think...
Amanda can open it up and share that screen.
And it's the third thing, well, it's a waiver request, is where you got your arrow.
Open that up, yeah.
There's actually two different documents. The one that Amanda is pulling up right now, the waiver request, that was done back in March, and I would admit to being ignorant when I did it. I simply said, you know, I want to waive the whole four, five, and whatever it was. And the more I looked, and then I had discussions with your zoning officer, and it became obvious to me that I was not very intelligent when I simply did that blanket. And I did a second document, which Jim has and which I do have in my computer upstairs, which walked through and specifically identified which individual ones that I wanted to do. Oh, actually, now this may be, yeah, actually, I'm looking at this up on here now. Yeah, see, I said items four, five, and six all, and that's ridiculous. Okay? That's ridiculous.
Yes, and this is the letter we talked to last month.
Yeah.
And had that discussion.
And I think at that point last month, I was a lot more clear in terms of my concerns. And in fact, as I recall, my discussion was, it seemed to make a lot of sense to be able to take the A2 and do all of the, basically to do the site plan on the A2 with such additional information as would be necessary to really give the commission the information it needs to do the due diligence that I understand and appreciate you need to do.
Okay, so we're saying there's a document that requests more specifically items to waiver than the one we're looking at on the screen right now? Is that true?
Yeah, I did. I did want. Again, it's, gee, I don't even remember now, because I know, I know I went through, I mean, for example, that the one I did back in March said all of section four. Well, I mean, section four, I think, section one, two, and three are all basic information things that would have to be there. So there's no way that the commission is going to waive every single item under 23.2B. You have by the regulations the right to waive anything you wish under 23.2B. What the regulations say you cannot waive is, oh gee, I don't even have the numbers in front of me, but it was the sections that I addressed in one of my notes, as a matter of fact.
Is there anything else that I should pull up right now that would be helpful? Any of these?
Well, Amanda, I'm looking for a drawing, and it's got number 289 on it. It's page 814. And that's, that shows the little subdivision over there, it looks like...
Yep.
Jim, do you know which one that is?
Try that location map, Amanda. That might be, might be it there. Nope, that wasn't it.
Yeah, that's, this actually gives you, I think, a little bit of a sense about the levelness of the site. Mr. Person, you raised a question at one point about that, and I think, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned that you thought the lot was pretty level. That location one, which Amanda just pulled up before, really shows, I think, how level that is. This is the A2. This is the survey that I referenced back in the April meeting about what I thought I would do. And what you have here, you can see where the three arrows converge. That's the location of what I call a caretaker's cottage. Yeah, right, right there, that's it. And the reason that there's a line there, there's the building, and then there is a six-foot porch and a six-foot deck. And then the arrows tell you how it's positioned relative to the property. Um, and then the arrows tell you how it's positioned relative to the property line for my, my abutters. Um, it doesn't show the, the distance, which is approximately three hundred and fifty-nine feet from the back of that to the back of the property. The, um, I tried to show, the, the, the yellow is the proposed septic system to support the, uh, the caretaker's cottage. Um, I have the existing house, uh, septic system marked in a rectangle down below to give you a sense where that might be. And then the, 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 the arrows in the driveway, uh, that was one of the things, Mr. Person, that I think you mentioned. Um, the, there's an existing garage, which also has a ten-foot addition to it, um, which was done in March of this year with a, a proper building permit. Um, and what I have done, I've, I've had Ron, we had horrible, horrible, bittersweet and that area to the, to the front side of the garage where there's, where there's some, yeah, right there, that was a mess. I mean, there was, there was a torn up doghouse in there. There was rubbish. There was the, the, the tailgate of a, of a pickup truck, rubber tires, bittersweet like crazy and, and, and trees, it was horrible, just horrible. Um, I had Ron come in and Ron, uh, took his bobcat and cleared the whole thing out. Um, it's not been, been finally, uh, finally contoured quite yet. But my, my hope and my expectation is that both construction vehicles, and if ultimately we decide we want him to be able to drive out to the house or whatever, is that we would use that access to the front of the garage and then go along the tree line, uh, just on the grass. And if that didn't work, then I have a second way, which is between the septic system and the garage. I prefer not to use that for a construction vehicle because it's a little too close to my leach field. Um, I'd prefer not to have, have a heavy duty vehicle like that. So anyway, that, that gives you a pretty good sense of what we're looking at and where, um, the, the, the detached accessory apartment, um, the Divine Caretaker Cottage, um, was, was very, very carefully positioned.
Another thing, Bill, is you, you need to have the location of reserve septic area on a print.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by a reserve?
The reserve area for that septic. It, uh, Eastern Highland must have dug for their reserve system area, right?
Okay, is the reserve system, you mean the leach field?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The reserve area for the, the leach field?
Right.
Right. That's usually located on a print also.
I don't know what a reserve is. I, I know that there's a tank and there is a leach field. The, the, uh, as I said to Jim, there is, as I've read all of the zoning regulations and I, and I, I think I've read all of them very, very carefully as it applies to, to my project, that there was no requirement to have a septic design there. There was a requirement to have a soil test, um, which we do have. I've gone a little bit further than that, although I don't have the evidence for you because Justin didn't deliver it when he said he would. Um, and I emailed him today. By going further, I mean, I literally have, have, have a design coming with the specific locations for the septic system and the leach field.
And, and they must have dug a pit for the reserve because they don't do it without having a reserve on it. They always have a reserve.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I still don't...
I'd be happy to, um, I'd be happy to work with Bill, um, and address checklist. Just go through twenty, twenty-three item by item and come up with a recommendation based on, on your comments this evening, what the commission needs and what, what might be waived.
Appreciate that, Jim. And Scott, I appreciate your comments. I looked at this drawing and I said, well, that tells me what I need to know. And, uh, and I didn't have the experience to think, now, there's probably a couple of other things in there that, that we want to have with it. So I guess my goals are now cut in two. I know we can't make it, so there's not a pain in the neck process. The best we can do is, is make it timely. But Bill, is that, that drawing that Scott's alluding to something that you think you could have done within three weeks so that we can have it in place to support, uh...
Number one, I don't, I, I don't have a clue who I'm going to go to to have that done. But I, I will find someone, okay? I, I...
Bill, if you know where all your pins are or some of the pins?
Yes, sir, I know where all the pins are. I have found them.
That's very helpful for them. All they have to do is set up those pins.
So, so I will go look for a surveyor to do this. If it's a surveyor, there's no problem. I can find a surveyor.
Well, you're not, you're not really proposing any drainage?
No.
Well, a PE stamp, I don't believe would be necessary. I think an LS would, would meet the, or the record, regulations. I believe. I can check that.
Well, just, just, Jim, it just says, uh, professional Connecticut Registered Professional Engineer.
Okay. So it's got to be PE.
Um, Ken, okay. I, I don't know how to say this other than, than honestly and, and respectfully and bluntly. I am right now very, very concerned about, about being delayed another month. Um, I, I tried to start this process back in March. Um, Jim was working with me. Um, the, the virus stuff got in the way, so I, I did not have my April meeting in March as I had hoped to. Um, it had been my original hope to be able to break ground in June. I know I can't do that now and I'm, I'm, I have no problem with the delay. But if, if you folks aren't comfortable setting a, a public hearing date for, for the June meeting, I'm going to lose another month. Um, and if I lose another month, then it, I mean, I, I'll live with whatever I have to live with. I, 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 I admit that. Uh, but gosh, it's going to make it difficult for me. Um, if there's any way that, I mean, if, if, if the public hearing is at the June meeting, that would be June fifteenth. Um, if I back up ten days, if I can find a, a Connecticut Registered Engineer who can do the, the, the AS-Built and I just want to be really clear that, that, that we all know what it is you're asking me to do, so I don't come up with something wrong. Uh, I, I really live in fear of additional delays right now. Um, and that's not your problem. I know it's not your problem. I'm not trying to make it your problem. I'm just trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to be as open and as honest, uh, as I can. Um, I just, uh, with, with what, with what's required for the timeframes and everything else, is it, is it possible for you folks to, to accept this application with a provision that an AS-Built be, be in the hands of, of the zoning officer by a date certain and tell me the date, um, so that the public hearing can be scheduled for June? Otherwise, I'm going to lose a whole month. Am I totally out of line?
I don't think you're totally out of line, Bill, then, uh...
If you can get all these things...
I'm sorry, the AS-Built, would you...
The AS-Built is after you put the, before you start framing. Soon as the cement's done, you put, do the AS-Built.
That's what I, that had been my plan and that's, that's what I wanted.
How are you going to know where to dig the hole if you don't have a stake in the ground?
I do. I've staked the house.
Well, if you staked it out, you know, the surveyor can come over and, and locate those stakes on a drawing.
Yeah.
Very easily. All these things, all these stakeout things that you have, all they have to do is transfer them to a drawing. All you have to do is stand there, pick up a couple of pins and then open your stakes and put them on the print.
Okay.
That's all they have to do. Then you've got to fulfill these things and, and, and I think you can easily.
When, when you say, um, Registered Professional Engineer, is that also what I normally refer to as a surveyor?
Yeah, you can probably ask Jim Hart, Alasy, he'll, he can point you in the right direction.
Okay, I will.
You have to have the reserve system on there. You had to have, you know, you should write down all those things in twenty-three two B. It doesn't have the, uh, EHHD should have given you, dug the holes for the reserve. They should tell you where the reserve will be and he can put that on there also. This is a real live house. It's not a shed.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, so, uh, kind of regrouping here. I think there's two issues. The first of which would be, we need a motion to accept the application. The second issue is, do we want to do a site visit? And I'm not really particular about which order we do those things, but I think those are the two things that we have that, uh, that is the, are the next steps. Does anybody have any comments on that not being the way ahead here?
What about the other, the Wetland review, Jim?
I was going to have Megan take care of it, um, because she, she took the DEP course.
Yeah.
She's signing on.
She, she can sign off if it's, if it's out of the area, so the Wetland...
Yes. I think she still has to be designated by the commission for that to take place.
Yeah.
My, actually, I think what we have to do is, we have to get some corrections from...
My understanding is next Wetland meeting...
From Mark Brants.
Is on the first of June.
I know, I find...
And we will leave that meeting with an answer to the Wetlands.
Okay.
You know, there's, there's about three different ways that we can get through that. I don't think, to come to a finding that, uh, that the Wetlands review doesn't need to take place, should take the, the lengthy process that it does if the Wetlands review does have to take place.
Right.
If you go back to the CROG diagram and, and it seems to have, uh, you know, a pretty good sense, I would think, you know, a stream, uh, over, you know, the next property, uh, over to them that's on the, the far side of that property and it's got Wetlands around that. You know, there certainly was nothing around Bill's property to do that.
That's good.
Yeah, and so I think we can come through that, whether it, it needs a whole board decision that, uh, that it is not, uh, need to be acted upon through Wetlands where Megan does it herself. But that, that, that will happen at first of June.
Kind of be out of the hundred-foot view area, doesn't it?
Yes, and it looked to me like it was.
Yeah. What I can do is, is ask Megan to take a look at it prior to that June first meeting. So no matter, so it can be addressed, no matter what, what parameters there are, whether she needs commission action or not. I mean, she doesn't, she's not going to, all she might be looking for is designation, not a, not enough.
Jim?
Yes.
Is, is Megan taken training to become the Wetlands agent or, you know, to apply for it?
She, she took the training. I, I mean, that's not her intent.
Okay.
But she, she was able to take it, quite frankly, because she is a DEP employee.
Oh, she is, okay.
And she was able to do it sort of in-house, I believe.
Okay.
Course is not available right now.
Okay, I don't know her. I was just asking because we've, you know, John left and then the other person left and then, um, you know, you had mentioned her taking the course right now. So I was just asking for mine and anyone else's information. But thank you.
I stated to, for, for, I think, um, go.
I think we can come through the Wetlands issues before we get to a public hearing. So let's take the, the easy question first. Is there a desire that we go do a site visit? I think it would be helpful to me. Jim, I know you've already been out there.
I don't have any problem with going out there. I would like to go to state too.
Fine with me. Yeah, it's okay with me. I've, I've driven by, I've just never been on the property.
Yep. Well, and, uh, you know, Bill's already said he's got the, the location for the, the, the house staked out and, and I think that, uh, just the situational awareness of going out there and take a look would be helpful for all of us with understanding what it is we're talking about.
Okay.
So with, with that in mind, you know, we normally, uh, is, is Saturday morning convenient for folks to go out and do it? And I know this is a holiday weekend with all the social restrictions in place. I don't know that that makes an awful lot of difference. You know, if we were to do something like nine o'clock on Saturday, would that work for everybody?
That's fine with me.
Does that work for you, Bill?
I am happy to, to have you folks here whenever it is most convenient for you.
Okay. Jim, work for you? Jim, the Saturday morning work for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay, very good. So, uh...
Jed?
Yes.
This is Leanne again. Um, is it...
Yeah.
Should we have the sidewalk before the public hearing?
Yes, we should. Yeah, and, and in fact, that, that's the way our procedure has it be done.
Okay, because I think in the past we've done it both ways.
Yep, but I think the more information we have before we go to a public hearing, the better the public hearing will be. And...
I understand that part. And, and if you have a public hearing that is not continued, then you don't have a chance to have a sidewalk as part of the public hearing.
Right.
I understand that part. I just, maybe I'm thinking of times when we did have a continued public hearing only in that that can be useful because, and again, it's a moot point if we're not going to continue the public hearing, which we probably are and I shouldn't speculate. But, um, anyway, I, I won't make that point because it's probably not going to happen.
Okay. So we'll do a site visit, uh, this Saturday, nine AM.
Excellent.
Is, uh, anybody there willing to make a motion that we accept the application?
I'll make a motion. I would like to move that we access, uh, accept the application of the property of the estate of William and Casey Divine. Uh, application number P and Z oh three dash twenty for the creation of an accessory apartment on Eighty-four Bear Swamp Road, AKA Assessor's Map thirty-four, block twenty-seven, lot six.
Thank you, Susan.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Any other discussion? Hearing none will take a vote. Aye?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We, uh, the motion passes five, zero, zero.
So Jim, you're going to go over twenty-three B with the applicant?
Yes, I will.
Twenty-three two B? 23-2B, I mean.
Good.
And I agree with Scott, well, I guess it's easy, once you get somebody to come in and make the drawing, to put a lot of that information that's in there on it. It would just sort of happen. But I'm still a little, and I don't like embarrassing myself in a public meeting like this, but, you know, we talked about having this as-built drawing after the hole gets dug in the ground. You know, you kind of got to have the application done before you start digging the hole, so I don't know how we get ourselves around that, but if Bill's got the place staked out where he wants it, I think we can get a picture that reflects that, reflects the septic system on there with the leach field and a reserve field, in case that leach field fails, that way you've got a place to put in another leach field, I guess that's what the requirement is, and, and that, that should put us in pretty good shape.
Right.
And I know Jim can point you in the direction of a couple of engineers.
There's one right in town.
Go ahead, Bill, you're, it looks like you're trying to say something, we didn't hear.
I was just gonna say, I, now I understand the reserve, meaning a second place for a leach field if the first one fails.
Yes.
Which is why obviously they do three different test pits, we only did two test pits. I looked at, at Bad King and said, we don't need a second or third one, we've got two good test pits. And he said, fine, you know, you paid for three, you can have a third one if you want one, and I figured I didn't need to have the man that I had hired to come and dig the test pits, dig a third one, so we didn't do it. Now I understand what you're saying, and there's no problem, given the fact that where the two test pits were, they're spaced.
Okay. Any other discussion on the application that we've got here? And again, in conclusion of that discussion then, I, I still want to go back and thank Bill for all the, the hard work he did getting to this point to, to have the information we've got on the night that we accept an application. I think we, we're headed in the right direction on, on what it is we should expect to get. I think that was for the first scrutiny of that very, very thorough and well-prepared, and so I think there should be no reason for us that we can't get to, to that public hearing on June 15th.
Thank you.
The, a couple of comments on that, Jim, do we have, does the town have the signs for posting on that?
No, we do not.
Okay, so.
No, I could, I could try and take care of that, though.
And, and again, with the, we're still operating under the coronavirus executive order, which if, all you have to do now is send letters to the neighbors, and I, I don't think you need to have a sign. I think you'd be well-served to put one up, just in case there's any public interest, I don't know that there would be any, but Jim will go through with you what, what the requirements are for, for posting and notifications for the
Right.
The public hearing.
You have to notify the adjacent landowners.
And I saw one of the attachment was the, the adjacent landowners, so I know you're prepared to go out and do that.
I, I did speak to Bill about that, and I am going to send him a copy of the, the executive order that details what he has to do. And I believe the signs are still in order.
Okay.
The registered mail is not, you can send by regular mail. Pretty clear, have to get him a copy.
Okay, anything else?
I will find a registered engineer, I'll start tomorrow, and maybe Jim, if you've got some suggestions. But I, I will find someone, and I will do my absolute level best to have that done, and, and in Jim's hands for, for transmittal to, to the members of the commission. Hopefully no later than the first week in June. And I will do that.
That would be great. Thank you very much. And that completes our item five, new business. Bill, you're welcome to stay, welcome to go. One of the things I probably should have mentioned right as we started tonight, the session is being recorded, so you know, it's all on video, if anybody cares to go look.
Can I, can I ask for clarification, Mr. Chairman? I'm not sure that, that, that the public hearing has been set, has it? I don't know whether that takes a motion or not.
I don't know either, you got any insight on that for me, Linda?
You do have to set a public hearing date.
Okay, and so we need, we need a motion for a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Bill, for keeping us honest there.
Thank you for keeping me honest.
The anybody care to make a motion that we hold a public hearing on June 15th at our next regularly scheduled meeting?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Susan. Any discussion?
I just note that I will take care of posting the, the sidewalk.
Okay.
Can I just have clarification of who made the second, because everybody was talking over each other?
I thought it was Susan.
I made it, Susan.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no discussion, we'll vote on the motion at hand, which is to hold a public hearing on June 15th at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Anne?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, the motion passes 5-0-0.
Thank you for your trust that I will do what needs to be done, and thank you for your confidence, and thank you all very, very, very much for, for these two approvals tonight. I won't let you down, we're gonna build something that Andover is gonna be very proud of, that's gonna be very, very consistent with a 1747 historic property. Thank you all. I am gonna, I'm gonna wave off, I'm gonna go get my dinner.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, moving on to old business, the item of old business is lake regulations, and both based, you know, on the timing and a couple of other things I want to talk about, and the fact that I have not had the opportunity to spend time with Jim making sure that both he and I have a good understanding of the lake regulations, I want to do that before we bring that and spend valuable commission time reviewing that, so we will pass on that tonight. I understand that that is a high priority thing for us to get done, but, but not tonight. Moving on to item seven, administrative report from the zoning agent, Jim.
Out of activity, just springtime sheds additions is a subdivision application coming forward in the near future. Gravel pit, there, there is some, what I see is, is I don't see material leaving the site, but I see it being sifted and such. So I will be monitoring that. Just to be maintaining erosion control seems to be gaining after storms, I do make a point to watch by, on occasion.
So the subdivision that will be heading our way, is that the one over that we walked for?
Webster Road. Yes.
Barnes Road, I guess.
To it's expected to be a two-lot subdivision, actually bordering, battling the Bolton Town Line, so it'll be interesting.
Okay. Yeah, that was not all time, Drew, what road was that on, Jim? I can't remember.
Webster Lane.
Webster Lane.
Got it. Thank you.
Jim, what was the second item you said about the gravel pit after, this is next to the extra mart, I assume? After material leaving the site seems to be being sifted and what?
It's just being processed, what I see is, is material being processed.
I thought you said something about after something happens, something else happens. In addition to the part about the material leaving the site.
I just, I mean, I assume
DNS measures?
Oh. The, the cell plant seems to, is in place, hasn't blown out.
I'm sorry, that what is?
The cell fence, the erosion control measures.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, approval of meeting minutes from April 20th.
I'll move to approve the minutes of April 20th.
And that was Leanne?
Yes.
Thank you, Leanne. Thank you, Anne. Any discussion on the minutes?
Just one tiny thing, I have about five windows open at this point. I think it was at the top of page seven, or near the top of page seven, about the Pine Ridge Drive, there's just one spot where it, it's called Pine Wood, I think every other, every other reference has Pine Ridge. It's just a, a minor thing.
Oh, I see it, second paragraph?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I see it there too, okay, very good, any other comments on the minutes? And I, I got one, also very minor comment on the attendees, and I thought we should have Amanda listed in that group of attendees. So if we could add her, because I know I couldn't have done the meeting without her being here, and I appreciate her showing up.
I, I agree, I realized I had done that today, so glad, I'm glad I picked up on it.
Okay. Um. So Linda, last time with, with only the minor corrections that we made, you let us vote on the minutes as amended? Is that correct way of doing that?
I've always done it that way.
I'm happy to do. With, with that in mind, we'll, we'll vote on accepting the minutes, Anne?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion to accept the minutes passes 5-0-0. Moving on to item nine, miscellaneous items. Jim, you want to talk? To turn in the money back in?
Do you accept it? Yes. Do we have a copy of that? Memo?
If not, I, I have a copy here, and I can, a hard copy, and I can just read it, it's not very long.
Okay.
So, here goes. "Good morning, Amanda. I was wondering if you could help with something, I'm trying to get an item added to the PZZ meeting, and do not have email for Linda, our current commission chair. Purpose is this, the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance have asked that any available unspent funds be reallocated for other purposes. Planning and zoning has a large balance in the account, 0803-310, legal, professional. It would be helpful if they could make a motion to relinquish anything remaining. I will check on any outstanding bills to be paid before actually making a transfer." So their motion could read up to current available balance of $4,375.
What was that number again, Jim?
Want to make a motion?
Um. Yes, so, let's make a motion, and then after we have the motion, we can discuss it.
Are they asking to relinquish it half at the year's end, or prior to the year's end?
I think they're looking to get that now. Doesn't, doesn't our year end on the 1st of June?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, and again, well, we'll, we'll discuss it, but my assumption is that as soon as we approve it, that money's gonna be allocated to other things.
Right, it's the legal fund?
It is.
Right, I'm gonna make a motion?
Make a motion.
You, you mean, sorry, this is Leanne, you mean our, our year ends June 1st, not July 1st? The fiscal year?
This, this is London, it ends June 30th.
June 30th, okay.
Yeah.
That's all.
So did you make a motion, Scott? I, I can't recall.
I make a motion to relinquish $4,375 from the planning and zoning legal fund. What else?
That, that would be it, but I think it should say up to the current balance of
Okay.
Just in case, so we have any bills that need to get paid out of that money going forward.
All right, so I move to relinquish for up to $4,375 that's in the planning and zoning legal fund.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Susan. Any discussion?
Who sent that to you anyways, Jed?
Um.
Find it, board of managers?
That's from the town treasurer, Barbara.
Okay.
And, and my only concern is, I know when we went through and made up the budget for this year, we did not put any money in the budget for the extensive legal review, when, when we created the budget for this year, and I get my this year's and next year's moved up, but the current budget, we put like $5,000 in it, expecting that Mark Brants was going to do a complete review of all our planning and zoning regulations.
Right, that money's gonna be put back in, in the new year, Jed.
Okay, so so if that's going back in for the new year, then it doesn't make any sense for us to retain that, because we, I don't think we will be having Mark do that between now and the end of June.
Correct.
Okay. So that was my concern about the request, and it looks like we've got that adjudicated properly. Any other comments on that request? Hearing none?
It sounds reasonable if we're gonna be able to have our money we need next year, so.
It does, yep, I, I thought that was a smart thing to do. So with that in mind, call for a vote, Anne?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes 5-0-0. Any other miscellaneous items to talk to tonight?
Nothing ever happened with the go ahead. Go ahead, Jim.
I thought that the acceptance of resignation from
Yeah, that's item 10.
Okay.
We'll get there in just a minute, and, and we also have commission open discussion coming up, so you've got a miscellaneous item that you're not thinking of right now, we got other opportunities to, to talk about that. Hearing none, move on to item 10. Jim tells me that, yes, in fact, we, we did get a resignation letter from George Knox. And so I guess at this point, we will accept his resignation and go on from there. And so, I guess at this point, we will accept his resignation, and go on from there. Moving on to item 11, public speak. Anybody from the public wish to, to speak?
Honey Dixon?
Yes, this is actually Kevin Artisan from 927 East Street. Hi, Jim is already aware of the application for 12 Webster Lane. It's not an official planning and zoning application yet. Right now, they're doing wetlands. But during the site walk, there was some confusion whether it was a subdivision or a free cut. I know this can be handled offline, I was just wondering if the commission could clarify, clarify if it was in fact a subdivision or a free cut. And I don't expect an answer tonight, just wanted to bring it up.
The law was worth 1955.
I'd be happy to address that.
Thanks, Jeff.
It was initially, the wetlands application indicated that it was a free cut. But the engineer, Jerry Hardesty, indicated that it was in fact a subdivision.
Right.
Oh, it is, I mean, he would not, I mean, when, when plans are submitted, it will be reviewed in its entirety, but he wouldn't go through the subdivision process if he didn't have to.
Okay, but maybe the case, just wanted to bring it up, that's, that's all.
It's a harder way to go. Because apparently he wasn't aware of it at the time that he submitted the wetlands application, and it's not a big deal really, I mean, it's picked up somewhere along the line.
Fair enough, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to commission open discussion. Anybody have anything to bring up to the commission that we should talk about? Did we hear any more on the Pine Ridge Drive thing?
No. I'm surprised. I, I do have an issue, I'm not on the commission, but I'd like some feedback on, on how we're now placing materials on the website, does that work for folks? I mean, in the future, the idea is that all the material would be there. Meaning any letters, in, in the case of Mr. Divine, the waiver request that apparently wasn't posted, which I, which I didn't post, it's, right, didn't happen. But the idea of being, everything is there in one place. And the, the agenda is sent out and directs people's, kind of remind you that there's a meeting coming, and where it is, because we're not going to be doing this forever Zoom thing, and, but direct people to the website. Now, if people want packets, that's not a problem, just looking for feedback.
What does everybody think, a packet or how it was tonight?
I really liked the way it was tonight. I used to hate drowning in paper. And very often, when we were, we were reviewing in the past, we didn't have all the documents that would come in the packet. They'd show up for the first time the night of the meeting. And I appreciated having everything available to me, and having the time to go through and study it. And I felt much more prepared than I used to years ago. I think it was a very good move.
I think still what we're referring to is you put it, instead of having it under planning and zoning, you can have it underneath the meeting agenda where the meeting schedules are. In a packet with all the, all the prints and any other information from the applicant in the same place. But it was, it was just, you can either have it under, you know, planning and zoning, or you can have it under planning and zoning in a different place.
My only hesitation with that, I think it would be great, but my hesitation is if things are coming in last minute, then it might be hard to get the packet together. But what works for the Board of Selectmen and Finance is having a deadline for submitting materials for the packet, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Linda, I don't know if that works for the land use commissions. I think they go by a different set of rules as far as submissions go.
Right.
You can't.
Well, so, and it's easier for Amanda to put it in if she just throws in one piece, too.
Something to consider for all boards.
Right.
Especially with our new website coming soon.
And she doesn't have to open up one and put, put it back in, right?
I thought the way it was done today was good, I just didn't know about it ahead of time. So I didn't see them until the meeting, but I think it is a good way to do it, the way it was done on the website now.
Well, this is Leanne, I think, are you done?
Well, I was just going to say that I could see some of the things under the Divine property there were from earlier, and then some things were just put in, but it was nice to have them all in one place. Which if it was under the agenda, we would have had some last month and some this month, just kept them all together.
Susan, do you have any thoughts? Are you, I guess you said you liked it?
I liked it, and I fully support everything Ann said. It was just so nice to have it all there, and I could trace the whole history and not be missing something, and having to go back to a previous meeting to try to find an attachment. So I thought it worked very well.
So, I was going to talk about the same thing that, and Jim brought it up there. I liked having all the information for one application in one spot, whether it was last meeting, this meeting, or going forward, I thought that was very good. And all the other stuff, if it's not to do with an application, should probably reside in the same place that the agenda is. So if we would have had a copy of this email that, you know, was asking to turn the money back in, or George Knox's resignation and all that stuff, supporting documents for the agenda could be with the agenda, because there's no other file for them to go into. And so it's kind of putting the packet together, it won't be as good as the Board of Selectmen, where they're getting it, you know, well in advance. But I also was always frustrated when we showed up at a meeting, found out what was going on, and that was the first time that you had a chance to look at the documents, and you could not be prepared at all. So I thought this was a big improvement over that. And, and the other, I, I share the, the comment that we, we didn't advertise very well what we were doing. I know I was hunting in different spots, and I spent enough time hunting around that I eventually found everything that I was looking for. I think it will be easier in the future, because I know those places to go hunt. It may turn out that there's a better place to align all that information, and we'll figure that out as we go. But I thought is a, is the next step, it was very good. And I, I appreciate that organization. I was a little thinking that it would have been nice to have had Bill's letter that talked about all the things in his packet, and then everything was aligned so that you just went page by page, and, and I said that may be a bridge too far at this point, that, that was pretty hard, I just went through, copied them all off, and stuck them together in the right order so I could find them, but I appreciated that. The other question I wanted to ask of the other commission members is, the good, the good side of having a packet prepared when we get back to meeting face to face is that I didn't have to print any of it off. What I was always doing was I was printing the stuff off ahead of time, and then Amanda'd make another packet of stuff, and so we were getting, I was getting two copies of everything. And I think it's not a tremendous financial burden to, to print it off ourselves, although you would think that it would be nice to have the packet there, but if we're going to get the packet, we're only going to get it on the night we show up, but I think that's not when we want it. So my sense is, if you want a hard copy, print it off yourself, then that's just, you know, part of being a good volunteer. Anybody got any comments on that thought?
This is Leanne, I have just a couple. I can, I, I kind of see what you mean, but depending on what the commission members want to print out, I think that could really add up. A long time ago, we used to get everything, we might not get it until the day of the meeting, although we usually did, we used to get things several days in advance, and that was ideal. And then we started getting, we stopped getting much of anything as a hard copy.
How did you get it days in advance, Leanne?
Well, depending on what it was. If there was a deadline for somebody submitting something, then we, you know, would get it in our packet. If something could be submitted the day of the application, then no, we didn't, but.
How did the packet get to you? Was it mailed to you, or did you stop by and pick it up?
No, it was mailed.
Okay, yep, I, I have never received a packet in the mail since I've been on the commission.
No, it's, it's been longer than you've been on here since this happened. And it used to be really convenient. So I think the, but that hasn't happened in a long time, and I actually asked a couple of times over the years to have it done again, and no one did it. And then, so again, I, I can see, depending on how many drawings, and just how many items we want to print out, that it could add up. But I think you used a good term a few minutes ago about supporting documents. I mean, you know, today, we heard that I didn't know what was out there until the meeting. So then Amanda was able to post all the documents with the Divine application, and then as we were talking, I was able to go in and start clicking on them. But since this was the first month that I didn't even receive a notice of the agenda, I think, first of all, it's, it's kind of strange in this day and age that the office has been having trouble for months sending emails to anybody with a Yahoo email, and now they're having trouble with somebody with an AOL email. So that's kind of inconvenient in this day and age. And also, I think there needs to be some mechanism to let us know that there are supporting documents, whether it's under the, on, on the website that Amanda just pulled up, under those items, or if it's supposed to be part of the agenda. So it's kind of a catch 22, if we're not all getting emails. Because Amanda has asked us several times to forward certain things to somebody else on the commission if we see that they have a Yahoo email, because the office isn't able to do it for whatever reason. So it's almost like we don't know what we don't know.
So I just wanted to share my frustration about the email. But it is going to be fixed in the near future, right, Scott? Eric Anderson is working on a new email provider, we all know it's necessary. So hang in there, and I'll keep using the Gmail account for now, for you, Leanne. But I also just wanted to make sure, did everyone get the email that came from Susan on Thursday, May 14? It said, please see attached agenda for May's meeting, all of the application packets can be viewed online.
I just.
This is Leanne, I did not.
Okay, this is Ann, I did not see it, but I got Jed's email today. And I had also gone and searched for the agenda on the website. Now, tonight, I, because of somebody's comment, I went and looked at my spam, and sure enough, there was Susan's email from the 14th. So now I made a note on there, I told it it was not spam, so then it came into my box, my inbox. So I probably will not have a problem in the future.
Okay, and I need to learn that trick, because mine went in the spam file as well, and I, all I did was move it back over to the other side and send it out to you guys. But I think it, it came through as from Kathy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mine came through as from Kathy also, Kathy from the building department.
So who would know, you know, Sue's there, and Kathy's been gone for a year.
And this is, this is Linda, and I'm not getting anything from the building department.
And mine, this is Leanne again, mine was not in my spam folder either.
Oh, mine came from Kathy, I see that, yeah. That Kathy on the.
On the header.
Right. But then Susan Margery signed it.
I'll work with Susan to change the name of her email.
There you go, Amanda.
And Amanda, can you, I've asked her to add me.
Linda, I actually sent her the commission contact list for the land use commissions, and just reminded her to copy everyone, so that shouldn't be a problem going forward.
Okay, great, thanks.
And I think it is important that we get an email just to remind us that we've got a meeting coming up, and, and that sort of thing. So I'd like us to continue doing that, having to go to the website to find all the different stuff is. Okay. It's new, it's new, but it's very informative, there's all the information there, just everybody needs to know where it will be found. So, but, and somebody mentioned that some of the attachments in the documentation is fairly lengthy. And one of the things I've been forgetting to do, why we're all blocked out of Town Hall there, is I was going to ask for my own hard copy of the updated zoning regulations and subdivision regulations, so I could have an updated copy, because I like having a copy where I can make notes in there on this, you know, when we update it next time, fix this, you know, we had to struggle with this, and that sort of thing. So I for one would like a hard copy of the, the updated regs and subdivision regs, and I don't know about. I would like one too, Jed, if you, if you could get that.
Yeah, I called Eric, or emailed, I forget which it was, and he gave, he dropped off at my house a notebook with the updated regulations. So he didn't have to get it to you.
Okay, very good, maybe, so Susan, would you like one of those, too?
Sure.
So maybe Jim or Amanda can go, you know, pull the right lever to get Scott, Susan, and I a copy of that, Ann's already taken care of.
I would like one, too.
And Leanne, too.
Everybody who has one wants one. Thank you.
I didn't see your smiling face there, Leanne, it just reminded me when the phone. Anything else that you want to do on?
We can get our copies.
Discussion, Jim?
No, but I'd sort of follow up. I think what we will do is send out a, a test, make sure we have current email addresses. It's possible that the reason there's a problem is Susan's working remotely, and I know she's had a lot of problems with her commuter, computer. I don't know if that's the issue or not, but it's not, it's not uncommon to have, of late, we've had a lot of issues.
Okay.
We've been working on them.
I, I.
I'm going to speak better to that, but.
We had the special election ballot question on funding money for the IT upgrades. Everybody agreed that that was important, so hopefully those are in progress, if not. They are. Completion, super. Getting work on right now, as we speak, I think. Yep, and, and so we talked about the lake regulations, and that being an important thing. The thing that, that I'm trying to understand and make work as smoothly as possible here right off the bat is our process of handling applications. And, and all the things that we talked about tonight, you know, we're, we've got a bunch of things that are headed in a good direction. Again, I was pleased with all the work Bill submitted to us for the night when we got an application submitted, that's, that's pretty nice. And, and we will work on raising that bar, but the process ought to be well understood, and, and get us all the information, so that when we come to the meeting, we've had a chance to review all the documents, and we can have a good conversation about that. So that's really where I would like all of our energies to be going forward for a little bit there. The last, last two things already mentioned, you know, appreciated Amanda's support, and when I read the minutes from the last minute, the last meeting, I said, I don't know what meeting this was, but it sure sounded a lot better than the one I attended. And so I appreciate Linda's work on, on making that sound so nice, and having all the right information in there. So thank you. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
So Linda, and I also, I just wanted to mention to the commission that the new town website is. Go, Linda. And I also, I just wanted to mention to the commission that the new town website is literally being worked on as we speak, so all the information is being transferred to the new one, and we should have a live site to look at very soon, and we can start working on all the pages and get everything set, so. Getting closer.
Yep, great, sounds good.
Almost there. Thank you.
Any other discussion before we move on to adjournment? Would anybody like to make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn at eight fifty-one.
Thank you, Leanne.
Yeah.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes five zero zero. Thank you, everybody, for your help.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
We'll see you for the site walk this Saturday morning, nine o'clock.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.